Buenos en Hafa Day, the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning is calling this public hearing to order. It is March 28, Thursday at 9:06 a.m. In compliance with the open government law, notices of today's hearing were published in the Guam Daily Post, provided via email to senators, stakeholders and local media, and posted on the government of Guam Public Notices website on March 21, 2024 for the five-day notice and Tuesday, March 26 for the 48-hour notice. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues here today, Senator Jesse Lohan, Speaker Theresa Chalhui, Senator Chris Barnett, and Senator Tala Tadegui. Thank you for being here. The purpose of this hearing is to hear testimony on the following agenda items. On the executive appointment of Mr. Juno Yun to serve as a member of the Guam Banking and Insurance Board, the second item is to hear testimony on Bill 244-37COR, sponsored by Speaker Theresa Chalhui and co-sponsored by Senators Sabina Flores Perez and Chris Barnett. It's an act to add a new Section 57109 to Chapter 57, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to providing a Guam identification card and Guam Real ID fee waiver for seniors in high school, foster children, and upon order by the court. The last item on the agenda is to hear testimony on Bill 248-37 at 10:30, sponsored by Senators Sabina Flores Perez and act to amend Section 5214b of Subarticle B, Article III, Chapter 5, Title V, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the sole source procurement of technology, hardware, software maintenance, support and customization services. The rules of conduct are as follows. Those called to testify will be in order with government agencies, followed by those that confirm in advance of my office prior to today's hearing, and then according to the sign-in sheet. Those providing oral testimony will first be recognized by the chair. Please state your name, organization and position if relevant. Senators will be given opportunity to ask questions after each panel. Questions and testimony shall begin fine to the substance and nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to character or motive of any senator or individual testifying is not permitted. So now to begin our agenda. On the executive appointment of Mr. Juno Yun to serve as a member of the Guam Banking and Insurance Board, an overview of the board as follows. Some of the powers of the board include they're able to restrict the withdrawal of deposits from all or one or more territorial banks where the board finds extraordinary circumstances and makes such restriction necessary for the proper protection of depositors in affected institutions. The board can also order the holder of shares in a territorial bank to refrain from voting said shares on any matter if it finds that such order is necessary to protect the institution against reckless, incompetent or careless management, to safeguard the funds of depositors or prevent the willful violation of the laws of Guam. The board can also order any person to cease violating a provision of any laws relating to insurance. It could enter into contracts for services for a certified financial examiner in good standing with the Society of Financial Examiners and with the actuary in good standing with the American Academy of Actuaries. And so the other thing about this board, so this board contains nine members. Three of them shall be executive officers of entities chartered as banks and licensed to conduct business on Guam, and at least one shall be a state bank. Three of the members are executive officers of insurance businesses licensed to conduct business on Guam, and there shall be three members who are not directors, trustees, officers, employees or stockholders of any entity chartered as a bank or any entity engaged in the insurance business, one of whom must be an attorney admitted to the practice of law on Guam, and only one of whom shall be a classified employee of the government of Guam. So these are the requirements for these board members. So invitations, today's hearing were sent to the Commissioner, Michelle Santos, Commissioner of the Guam Banking Insurance Board, who's here today to provide testimony, and Acting Director of Department of Revenue and Taxation, Maria Lozama. So now I'd like to invite Commissioner, and if there's anyone else who would like to testify, as well as the nominee himself, to come to the table, and we'll go in order with the Commissioner and then any other testimonies, and lastly, we'll reserve it for the nominee. Okay, so I'd like to recognize Commissioner, if you don't mind. Commissioner first, thank you for providing testimony.
Good morning, Honorable Sabina F. Perez and honorable members of the 37th Guam Legislature. My name is Michelle Santos, and I am the Banking and Insurance Commissioner at the Department of Revenue and Taxation. I'm here to testify in support of Mr. Yun's appointment. I do not personally know Mr. Yun, so I looked him up on Google. His name and picture popped up, and it lists four or five insurance designations after his name, which are very impressive. He is a Certified Financial Planner, Certified Insurance Planner, a Chartered Life Underwriter, a Chartered or Certified Property and Casualty Underwriter. With these designations, he is sure to be an asset to the Banking and Insurance Board. My staff and I pledge our support to Mr. Yun and welcome him to the board. Thank you for this opportunity to provide some testimony.
Sisus Masi, Commissioner, for your testimony. And we'll reserve questions for later, if that's okay. So I'd like to now then recognize the nominee himself. Good morning, Mr. Yun.
Good morning, ma'am.
And you're recognized to provide your testimony.
Okay. So can I speak?
Yes, please proceed.
My name is Juno Yun, and I was working for Guam Housing Corporation as a vice chair and also previous governor's economic council, but those two positions that I served was recommended by the governor and other board members of the corporation. And after I refused several times, I accepted it. After, actually, I retired from my corporation five years ago, and I came back because a lot of crisis is going on Guam and my company, so I came back over a year ago. And after I come back, I also approached by other board members. I rejected because I was so busy. But this was, actually, I kind of voluntarily, after the typhoon, and as the Commissioner say, I have, I studied insurance as a graduate school, and I was working for the insurance company, and also I had my own brokerage house in California a long time. So I always been involved in insurance industry in Guam, trying to help the insurance company and other insured people. But after typhoon, I realized that there is a lot of things is going on by the insurance company was not, in my opinion, doing their job properly to help the victims of insured. So I kind of voluntarily, if I possibly make just one drop of the world to the board to make it better our condition of insurance industry, that's why I'm here.
Well, yeah, thank you. Does that conclude your testimony, Mr. Yun?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. So, yeah, so in meeting with you, I met with you yesterday, you said you retired. You've retired, and then you've decided this is something you wanted to do to accept. You accept this nomination?
Yes.
And just like you said, you wanted to help. Before I go into those details, I wanted just to clarify. So if Commissioner, the position that he's filling is for the vacated seat by Mr. Scro, is that correct?
Yes.
So we want to be very absolutely clear that he's eligible for this position, right? So I know he has a lot of insurance background, but the position that he's filling is a member who is not a director, trustee, officer, employee, stockholder of any entity chartered as a bank or entity engaged in insurance business. So I guess, Mr. Yun, can you confirm that you are not a director, a stockholder, an officer, trustee of any chartered bank or insurance business?
No, I'm not.
You're not? Okay. Okay, thank you. And are you an attorney?
Yes, not licensed in Guam.
Not licensed in Guam. I know we currently have on staff an attorney, Dean McGlonya, on this commission, so he fills that position.
Yes.
So I just wanted to clarify that this position that you're filling is other than that?
Yes.
Other than the insurance, other than the banking, other than the attorney position?
Yes.
And other than the classified employee?
Yes.
Okay, so there is that one position. And we just need to also confirm that the position that's being vacated is that position?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, before we move forward, just to be clear. Okay, so can you explain, so what exactly in the insurance side you saw was a weakness that made you decide to take this, accept this nomination? In what ways were, there's a gap in service?
About 18 years ago, it's first time I came to here to help the mobile insurance company to improve their organization. I found out a lot of things was so behind. I hate, personally, I hate comparison to anything, anything, any cities, but was so outdated in terms of the policy forms and then litigation and the policy premiums. And then I've been trying to help them. I came back to Guam. I was not in the insurance industry, but a lot of things has been improved tremendously. So our Guam is now updating most of the industry, but still insurance, in my opinion, is not catching up like other industry. For example, our insurance policy is still not using updated one, even not 10 years ago. That's one of the reasons. And second, insurance carrier market is so soft, our territory is so small, so a lot of insurance company has no appetite, or they cannot diversify their insurance risk. So just a few insurance carriers was here, even two, three major ones left over. So we have not enough insurance carrier to compete, to give the better service to the public. So that's the one I also have some concern over.
Okay. Yeah, so there has been changes since COVID, I understand, in the insurance industry. What have you seen are critical changes as far as from the business side as well as the regulation side? Do you see changes within the regulation side? Because insurance is really controlled mostly by states, right?
Yes.
States, local entities. So what regulations do you think is critical to really adopt here?
Number one, I was not in the Guam, in the COVID era, but also I'm not quite sure what kind of regulation we have. But based on my observation, number one, the, how, I don't know exactly, but how much you can control the premium over the claim process. And personally, I have experience with my company and other insurance, they will ask me help. We have policy, in the 60 days period, they have to respond, then sell the claim basically. But when they, doing the business was good, but when they have a claim, the processing time and procedure was not appropriate or not matching with our policy form. Second, I don't know exactly, but I don't think we have the trust premium fund here, account. So usually the premium from the insured was not theirs until something happens. So I believe trust fund will be beneficial to the public.
Okay, thank you. And then regarding the banking side, so you're unique because you have a pretty strong background in insurance and banking?
Yes.
From my understanding.
I have some, yes.
Yeah, so, you know, one of the things that we have to adapt to is the cannabis, right? Cannabis, accepting money, because, right, currently federally, it's still a scheduled substance. So to accept money would be against federal laws.
Okay.
So to what extent, so part of what your, the role as a board, as a commissioner, is to advise the Commissioner on, you know, making sure the laws are being followed?
Sure.
So right now, according to my understanding, is that banks cannot accept transactional money pertaining to cannabis. Are you prepared, as an individual of this community, to assert that claim, if it is in fact accurate?
I believe if this question is not asking my personal opinion to using marijuana or not, assuming that since marijuana was, the recreational use was legalized. So in my opinion, regardless of my opinion to the use or not, the other regulation and law has to follow consistently with legalized marijuana. So if they can grow, they can sell, they have a business, we can have a license for that, and then all the money transition has to be accepted by a bank and to the often field for have more transparency. That's my opinion.
Okay, but if it goes against federal law, what was your, what would be your position?
Depends on the Guam legislature.
It depends on the local law?
Yes. Then if it's unconstitutional to the federal, someone initiate the case to the federal, because they will rule about it.
Okay.
I believe the local law is gonna be prevalent.
Okay, so if the local law is silent, what would you fall back on?
Local law silent? I'm not the senator, ma'am, but I support a certain, in my personal opinion, like I said, the local law legalized recreational marijuana subdue the business, then other regulation or bank should follow the regulations.
Should follow, okay. But if it's absent right now, what authority does, will you listen to? Because as a commissioner, you have to uphold federal and state laws, especially when it comes to banking.
Yes, then I support Commissioner and our board to make initiative.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
We can work together, support Commissioner and then our board to initiate, try to make the bill or...
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. What do you know about cryptocurrency? Is there a need to address that?
Cryptocurrency, I personally hold cryptocurrency.
I'm sorry?
I have coins.
You have cryptocurrency. But as far as banking here on Guam, do you see a need to develop policies for that?
I am not sure, but if the cryptocurrency was legalized, then if the bank will accept that, it's a lot of procedure and caution has to be needed. So I cannot, I'm not in the position to say yes, yes or no. I'm sorry about that.
Okay, so you need a little bit more research?
Yes, I have no study.
Okay. And then regarding conflicts of interest, I mean, you stated earlier that you are not a stockholder, trustee, employee, officer of any chartered bank?
Yes.
Or insurance business. But you did, in your packet, you did have, you did say you have an interest?
Yes, we have a Cortec captive insurance company.
Captive insurance, okay.
And I don't think I have any kind of conflict or interest, but you may consider it may, because we have Cortec captive insurance. Cortec captive insurance, as you know, because of captive insurance, and we don't do the outside business to the public, or even not our, any subcontractor or any affiliate company, only do for our own services. And even if you have, it's gonna try to fill the gap if the insurance deny what they don't wanna insure or what special needs. So even general property and casualty was insured by the other insurance carriers. But in case, when I serve as a board member, if any arise possibly conflict of interest, I dismiss or excuse myself.
Okay. And as far as meetings, are you committed, I know you retired, but are you committed to attending the commission?
No, no. I retired five years ago, but I came back one year ago. So I'm not retired. I'm now actively working on it. And I can promise I will never miss a single board meeting, because when I served two boards before, I never missed a single meetings. And my personal, if I added it, maybe you're not gonna believe it, from elementary school to the doctors, and then for 30 years of experience in my job, I never missed a single day. 100% perfect punctuality attendance on all my life. So I can be a sick, right? So since I keep my habit to not to miss a single day, I'm gonna get sick on Friday, usually. I'll get up on Sunday. My biology even matches my lifestyle. So I don't get sick on weekdays.
Thank you. I appreciate your directness. I think those are my questions for now. So I'm gonna offer the floor to my colleagues, probably in order. Senator Lohan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, panel.
Good morning.
Good morning. Mr. Yun, for transparency's sake, I've known Mr. Yun for years, and...
In the gym.
Yeah, that's right. And thank you for stepping up and wanting to fulfill that position. So can you, you've had some, of course, insurance board membership experience in the federal side, right?
Yes, I, the federal Congress has, Special Insurance Board has consisted of three members. I was one of three members for the US Congress, and was controlled by the Senator Edward Kennedy, the chairman. And they picked, actually, I was picked one of three members, and I believe that, not only because of my background or, because they pick up kind of the diversity of nationality or ethnic, so they pick one white people, one black people, from, I was kind of minority, Asians, I was there. But I served for two years as one of three US Congress members of the Insurance Board specialty.
And what years did you serve? What years?
1996 to 1998.
Okay. Under which administration? Which presidential administration did you serve under?
Who was it?
That's all right, we can look it up. No problem. Yeah, but you went through, yeah, you went through quasi-congressional, what do you call this, hearing, right?
Yes.
For your, after you were nominated, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, no, no, you have, definitely, Madam Chair, I vouch for his definite qualification for the position. And you'll be filling in for the unexpired term for Mr. Michael Scro, right?
Yes.
And so that term expires, I think, next year. So you'll be, if you get reappointed, you'll be back for another confirmation hearing, right?
Oh, I didn't know that, but, yes.
Because it's still unexpired, right? Yeah. So, yeah, so you'll fill the remaining time of the unexpired term, and then when that comes up, if you get reappointed, then you'll come back for another confirmation hearing. But thank you very much again for...
Yes, sir, I try my best.
But thank you very much for, again, stepping up and wanting to serve this critical, need critical board. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Sisus Masi, Senator Lohan, Speaker Theresa, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you. I just want to say thank you for your willingness to serve on the board and for your openness or directness in your responses to the questions of the chair, and I thank the chair for her questions this morning. I think those are appropriate. Sisus Masi.
Thank you, Speaker Chalhui. Senator Barnett, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning, Mr. Yun, and good morning, Mrs. Santos. And I too, thank you for your directness. And I also just want to commend the chair for bringing up some really good questions that I'm not sure we've reached the bottom of yet. So maybe if you could, just, Mr. Yun, so the chair, Senator Perez, had mentioned some of the restrictions relative to the spot you're filling and involvement or, oh, just involvement with the insurance industry. And did I hear you correctly that you said that you have, you are involved with captive insurance for your, for Cortec?
I said the Cortec, our family company, I'm handling the Cortec development side, but in our Cortec affiliate company, sister company, one of them is Cortec captive insurance.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Yun. And, you know, it sounds like you've got a great wealth of experience, and I too, thank you for stepping up and your willingness to serve.
Sisus Masi, Madam Chair. Sisus Masi, Senator Barnett. Senator Tadegui, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning to my colleagues. Of course, good morning to the nominee.
Good morning.
How are you? And of course, Mrs. Santos, and our listening audience. You know, it's so important for us to be here whenever we are confirming an individual, to ensure that the right person is sitting on the seat. And many a times, it's not here to, you know, say everything is really great and nice, and, you know, the flowers are blooming or anything like that. It's really to find out your true reason for sitting on this board. It's a very influential board, you know, as you know?
Yes.
I don't think, not everyone can sit on this particular board. You need the expertise, you need the know-how, and it's obvious with your background, you have what it takes. So first, I want to thank you so much for giving all your knowledge and education and expertise to do this without getting paid.
Yes.
So you're contributing back to the community, and I want to thank you so much for doing that.
You're welcome.
I was very happy to see you smile when you were explaining how you never miss a day of work.
Yes.
You know, unless you're sick, and then I saw a smile on your face, because the whole time you were sitting here, there was no smile until I saw that smile.
Thank you.
See, now you're smiling again. So it's very becoming of you. You have a beautiful smile, so keep that up. The thing is, I always worry about people wanting to sit on a board, but they don't show up. So you checked off that box for me, your commitment?
Yes.
For being there.
Definitely, yeah.
And I thank you for that so much. I did notice on your packet, usually it says president and CEO, and it says dates held 2010. So is it to present that you're still?
Yes, I'm present.
Okay.
Of CEO, Cortec Development, present.
Because it just gave a date held, but it didn't say if it's current, you're currently still the CEO and president. So...
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to clarify that you're working. So I guess you're the boss, so you can make sure you show up at the meetings at the insurance.
Actually, I'm the door open and door closed of my office, my company. I go there 7:00 a.m. to finish after 7:00 p.m.
Okay, well, that's very good to know, that you're very on time. I mean, knowledge, you know, and wealth is all because of being there and staying on top of the information. So I greatly appreciate you. So you're a very, very, very hard worker, and it shows. So thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Other than that, I have no further questions, and I appreciate that if I could be of service at all, if there's anything, you have any questions, or if you see something that you don't think is right, and you feel uncomfortable, you know, don't turn a blind eye. I'm willing to help. My door is always open, always open to you. So if you see something that's, I call shenanigans, please bring it up.
Thank you.
Let us know.
Thank you, ma'am.
And we'll take it on.
Thank you.
And thank you again. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tadegui. So I think this concludes the hearing, being that there are no other testimonies provided. I really want to thank you, both Commissioner Santos and Mr. Yun, for accepting the nomination. And we'll definitely follow up with the, just to clarification, just to make sure that you are eligible for this position before we move forward with the confirmation. So I appreciate your willingness to really kind of improve the situation for our island. And so, being said, being that said, the committee will continue to receive testimony till Wednesday, April 10, 2024. Please address all testimony to Senators Sabina Flores Perez, Chair President of the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning, which can be dropped off the mailboxes here at the Guam Congress Building or email to office@senatorparas.org. Sisus Masi, and thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Have a great day. So the next item of our agenda, the next item on our agenda is to hear testimony on Bill Number 244-37. thirty-seven, sponsored by Speaker Therese M. Tlahe, co-sponsored by Senators Sabina Flores Perez and Chris Barnett. It's an act to add a new section five seven one oh-nine to chapter fifty-seven, title ten Guam Code annotated relative to providing the Guam ID card and Guam real ID fee waiver for seniors in high school, foster children, and upon order by the court. I'd like to open the floor to the sponsor of this bill for her opening remarks. Speaker Tlahe, you're recognized.
Sisus Masi, Madam Chair, for holding this hearing on this bill. So Bill two forty-four seeks to enhance opportunities and services for Guam's youth by waiving the fees associated with obtaining a Guam identification card or a Guam real ID. The ID is a gateway to a host of critical services and opportunities for young people, including employment, health care, banking, and educational opportunities. So the intent of the bill is that by ensuring easy access to IDs, we will empower our youth to participate fully in society, especially immediately on graduation day will be ready. And there will be no impediment to that. Minors entering adulthood, particularly those without support systems or at high risk, often face challenges in obtaining these valid identification. So the fee waiver provision is crucial for financially challenged youth and ensures no one is disenfranchised due to inability to pay. I'm hoping it will also incentivize them to get this done, to get their IDs while it is free for them instead of waiting and holding that off to a later date and then, you know, anything happening in between there. So of course, the bill targets seniors in high school, foster children, and juveniles within the court system. And the bill particularly, it's very short, so I'm just going to read from it. It does, it says, "Applicable fees shall be waived for any Guam resident who does not already possess a valid driver's license or United States passport that does not expire on or before their eighteenth birthday and is enrolled as a senior in high school, a foster child, or a child under the custody of CPS, or a juvenile required to obtain an identification card upon order by the Superior Court of Guam. GDOE and DRT shall work to implement a system convenient to high school seniors and parents to minimize time away from school and away from work to obtain an ID." And I did discuss this with the directors of Revenue and Taxation, and they had already taken the initiative to arrange such programs for the convenience of the working parents and the students to do this on Saturdays. And so I'm hoping we'll hear about that also. This third provision of the bill says that village mayors shall expedite their responses to requests for verification of residency as requested by GDOE, the Superior Court, or the Department of Public Health and Social Services for those covered under this section. And they may submit those responses via email directly to Rev and Tax. So the intent of that section is that one of the necessary documents to get your ID is that verification of residency from your village mayor. And so we're just hoping they can send those by email to Rev and Tax, make it a little bit more efficient, make it also a priority for the village mayors to get this done so that that verification of residency is not a delay or an impediment to these youths when the Department of Rev and Tax is opening their doors specifically for them. So when they create a time period, for example, a certain school, we want them to be able to come in and get their residencies from their mayors kind of in priority so that they can meet whatever they need to meet in order to get their ID. Of course, this is all going to take the cooperation of the parents, and so we're hoping that they're going to understand the importance of the system. For that, we are relying very heavily on counselors and other GDOE officials to, and I've asked others, and we're going to help as well, to really educate students and parents on the importance of this ID upon graduation so that they're independent and they're able to go get their jobs, higher education. And for me, that they don't have a lapse in critical services if they are availing of social services under the government of Guam. The BBMR noted in their fiscal note that this, if, that high school graduates would account for approximately seventeen thousand three hundred ninety dollars in fees that are currently going to the Better Public Service Fund at the Department of Revenue and Taxation. And if they counted all of the foster children under CPS custody right now, six hundred plus, that that would be about six thousand. So a total of about twenty-three thousand in costs. But both, but they say they are not able to identify the total, the actual real costs. So, but that's the loss of fees that we can estimate. And for me, that loss of fees, of course, is important. However, I feel like the benefits of investing in these youths and allowing them to take control of their lives moving forward will offset other costs that we are going to have as a community. So I'm hoping that far outweighs any, this twenty-three thousand dollars cost. So this is something similar that we also did for homeless individuals and homeless youth in two thousand nineteen. We, by public law, authorize a waiver of fees for those individuals because we thought in the long run that they're being able to get an ID and seek employment. And we made special accommodations for the residency requirements also in that law. And so we're hoping to emulate that success, I think, of making sure those who are at risk in our society have no impediments to obtaining the services that they need or employment. So I hope that this will prepare our youth for success and contribute to our island's economic vitality and our overall, you know, community. So I want to thank you again, Madam Chair, and I thank you for those who are here to testify on this bill. I really appreciate this could not work without the cooperation, full cooperation of Guam Department of Education and the Department of Revenue and Taxation and our mayors. So sisus masi to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Tlahe. So I'd like to invite members of the public that are here today. So Acting Director Marie Lozama and staff, Arthur Menno, Superintendent Eric Swanson, and I guess that's it for those that are here today. But we also did receive testimony and support of the bill. Mayor Jesse Alec, as well as Geraldine Kabusi from the Masters of Social Work Program here on Guam. Okay, so at this time, I'd like to recognize, good morning to all of you. Thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule. I'd like to recognize Acting Director Lozama. Good morning. Yes, please proceed with your testimony.
Hafedain, good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker. I know Senator Lohan, Senator Barnett, and Senator Tadegui. Part of my testimony will probably just repeat some of Madam Speaker's comments. But if I may, we are aware that the bill's intent is to remove one of the barriers to future employment opportunities for enrolled high school seniors. You know, many, many people recognize this, that, you know, other challenges do exist, including a skills gap and employers requiring more complex and diverse skills. And that includes the governor and the lieutenant governor, who have commenced discussions and are in discussions with our agency on the issuance of such credentials to these groups and to include the other underserved groups. Some additional items to note or consider, as Madam Speaker indicated, we are unable to determine the true fiscal impact should this bill become law. A programming change may be need, may be, may need to be made with our vendor to include such groups. And of course, just a note, a reminder that the documentation requirements for such credentials remain unchanged. And Guam IDs are currently issued to those who are at least ten years of age. In closing, DRT is able to do this administratively, as demonstrated by the said MOU with the Office of Homelessness and Poverty Prevention, to provide IDs and waive related fees. And with that, that is my testimony. Thank you.
Sisus Masi, Acting Director Lozama will ask questions afterwards. So Superintendent Swanson, thank you for being here, and you're recognized for your testimony.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker, Senators. My testimony will be brief, but in support of the bill. One of the things that I see as a major consideration is that in this age group, we have a number of young people who have dropped out of school. And as we go into the process of issuing identification, that may give us another opportunity to get leads on young people that we can bring back into the system and connect to, especially to job training kinds of programs that would be useful to moving them forward in their community and being productive. I would ask that you consider possibly moving the age of eligibility down to maybe seventeen, since the compulsory education goes through sixteen. If there's a window in there where we can recapture some folks and get them better engaged in the program, that opens the doors to, first of all, completing their high school education, then also moving them into post-secondary programs that can lead to really valuable job training skills. So, but again, in support of the bill, we will certainly stand ready to do our part to bring young folks into this process and get them the credentials they need. Because I know that driver's licenses are not a reality for some. And I would hope that someday in the future, we could figure out a way to do that, too. Because I see feedback from employers that see an impediment to employing someone is the lack of a driver's license. And so that's a big piece, but that's a separate issue. Thank you.
Thank you for that amendment suggestion. So just to confirm, you're suggesting to include dropouts from high school?
Correct.
As well as lower the age to seventeen?
Because the mayors hold the key to this, that know who's in their community, and we can go back and cross-deck our roles with the roles that they have, and we can pick up those individuals that may be new to the community and we don't know about, or they may have dropped out and we lost track of them, we can get them back.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that suggestion. So Acting Director, in your testimony, you talked about programming change. Can you just elaborate a little bit more what that would entail?
So how it works in the system is, for example, the current MOU with O-HAP. To my understanding, there is a section there where you simply check a box that indicates, you know, is this person homeless, you know, and so forth? And then it'll kind of inhibit the area where you would have to collect the fee. So that likely would need to occur for these same groups.
Would that require vendor, so you're talking about the vendor, a scope of change, I guess, a work of, it would be an add-on, basically? Would that mean?
It likely will. We just need to verify with them. I don't believe it will be a major change. However, that is something that we will need to discuss with them.
Okay. And if you can also elaborate on the documentation requirements for minors to get an ID?
To obtain an ID for a minor, Guam ID?
Yeah, sorry. Can you just state your name while we're speaking? Thank you.
My name is Arthur Menno. I'm the supervisor for the driver license area.
Thank you. Sorry.
To obtain the documents that are required to obtain the Guam ID for minors, US citizens, they need to provide a proof of birth certificate. The parent that's on the birth certificate must be present with their valid form of ID. And the minor needs to provide a social security card and a proof of residence from the mayor's office. So basically, this will be the three documents for a minor.
Okay, so you said the parent has to accompany the minor?
They have to be present with the applicant with the minor.
Okay.
One of the parents that's on the birth certificate with their valid form of ID.
Okay, thank you for the responses. I'm gonna open up to my colleagues, Speaker Tlahe, if you have any questions.
Yes, thank you again for your testimony. And I'm guessing I'm going to classify it as your willingness to implement this at your respective agencies. I very much appreciate that. One of the comments we received from the mayor's counsel was that they had done the email verification of residencies during COVID. But reading from his letter, "We must plead with the Department of Revenue and Taxation to accept an emailed version of this form. This will significantly expedite the process. It will not adversely affect the district office supply inventory. We ask that the Guam Identification Card application regulations at the Department of Revenue and Taxation be reviewed before passing this bill to eliminate any barriers." So we had written the bill to specifically say that it will be allowed, an email version of that. Do you have any issues with that? Are you able to accommodate email verification from the mayors?
That will not be a problem.
All right, thank you.
We currently do that, yeah.
Okay, I thought so. That's what you said to me. So, all right, this will be great. We can assure all the mayors that this is standard practice now. For all categories or just for this category?
So to my understanding, I mean, the preference actually is to provide the physical copy. However, from some of those mayoral offices wherein there is, you know, time is of the essence or what have you, and we've established their identity or, you know, that it's coming from their office, we go ahead and we accept that.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, email.
That's great. You noted that Guam IDs are currently issued to those who are at least ten years of age. Okay, so I guess everyone would just have to comply with that. That's the statute. And of course, the documentation, yeah, I agree, that has to be complied with your current documentation requirements. All right, and I hope that programming will just be a minor change, not too expensive, of course, but I would like it if you do program it that you keep statistics, right? So you're able to keep separate the statistics of homeless that you are accommodating, and then these categories, youth, foster children, or whatever category, or who's the requestor, I guess, something like that. Dr. Swanson, thank you for coming here today. I had spoken about this bill after a confirmation hearing with Nadine Cepeda. She's one of the counselors. And we, you know, we talked about the importance on the students if they can graduate with an ID. And so I thank you so much as a superintendent for coming in and talking about that. And I just want to ask you, you have excellent suggestions, so I'm going to definitely take a look if we can reduce it to seventeen. And if we did, would that last longer than just going up to eighteen? Can we make it for a longer time? I'll work that out with Rev and Tax to see. And if we can, I think that's an excellent suggestion to match it up with the mandatory education requirements. Do you think, but again, the success of this will be based on convincing students and parents of the need or the importance of it? And it will take all of us. But how do you see GDOE helping in that regard? I know counselors, if they're going to counsel, for example, the seniors can, of course, check and ensure that they've got their IDs. And if not, then they set them up in this program to get it expedited or get it fee waiver done before they graduate. But how else would you?
Just like what we have in our foreign employees, the importance of having an ID is a gateway to other services. And so I see that if we can get uniform requirement from other agencies, for example, from the community college, from university, from other business entities that want to hire or bring people on, that they have to have a government-issued ID, there's only a couple of options there. It's either a passport or this identification or a Guam driver's license. And as long as we hold those requirements for everybody, then it becomes of value, then I need to get this for me so that I can go do what I want to do.
All right, thank you. Director Lozama, are you willing to, are able to talk about the ideas you have for facilitating this for? the ideas you have for facilitating this for high school students?
Okay, was it in particular the schedule or the accommodation? I know we had a discussion on that. Yeah, I mean, we feel that it will not be a problem or it will not be problematic to set up a schedule such that it will not affect the students, you know, going to school or having to, you know, having parents take off and have the students miss school. We discussed the possibility of even having a flex schedule so that we can accommodate these groups on a Saturday, perhaps even doing something between certain hours after school, you know, and so forth. So that's some of the ideas we've talked about.
Thank you. I think one of your restrictions was that in order, everyone's gonna have to convert to real ID sooner and that the real ID systems have to be located at Revenue and Taxation. They're not mobile. They cannot be moved to the schools, but they can accommodate school by school at the Department of Revenue and Taxation so we can organize it by schools or however the two of you decide to do that, correct? All right, thank you.
Correct.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Speaker Tjolaki. Senator Barnett, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning to the panel. I'm very encouraged by what I hear this morning. Acting Director Lozama, when I hear you say, "That's not going to be a problem", it's music to my ears. And Superintendent Swanson, I'm very encouraged by your commitment to, should this bill become law, get this out and, you know, hitting ground running on it. And, you know, I can already see kids who are eligible who are in need of these IDs because, you know, a lot of times if you don't have ID, in many ways, to our government, you don't exist. So again, I commend the author for really taking this holistic approach and addressing the issues with our foster care crisis. And again, I could already see it, field trips to Rev and Tax so we can get our Guam IDs, you know, let's make a thing of it. And so again, I commend the author, and I'm very, very grateful and thankful for your support, Acting Director Lozama, as well as yours, Dr. Swanson, and I wish you all a happy Easter. Sutus Masi, Madam Chair.
Sutus Masi, Senator Barnett, Senator Tadegui.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon, good morning still, I can say. It's always good to see you, Maria. Thank you so much for always taking my call, by the way. You've been a great director to do that and take time out to answer our questions this morning, as well as Mr. Menno, Vanessa, thank you for being here, and of course, Dr. Swanson, thank you as well for providing your information. I just have a few questions. Most of them were answered already by the panel on how to strengthen this legislation. I think it's important, you know, bringing the dignity to our students and providing the means to actually go to, you know, the ability to get work. You know, many, I don't know about some students, but I started working when I was 15 years old. And sometimes, you know, that ID helps, you know, to provide all the information you need. So it definitely brings a sense of responsibility early on in a student, so recognizing that. When it comes to driver's license, how old do you have to be? What is the minimum age, you know, to get a driver's license?
15 and six months.
Okay, 15 and six months, right?
Yeah, to go through the graduated process.
Okay, so about that time. And during that time, with this legislation in place, let's say it passes, and the student getting their driver's license, they can get the real ID on their driver's license for free? This law will give them that? Because right now, it's a certain amount of money. Get your driver's license, and then there's another fee for the real ID.
So actually, the focus is really just on the IDs, not on the driver's licenses at this time?
But if a student is getting their driver's license, they can get, like, I just renewed my license, and I got a real ID, you know, star on the top showing I can use my license as an ID card, right? So what happens there?
So there is currently no difference in price between a non-real ID credential versus a real ID credential.
Okay.
The requirement to have that real ID credential has actually been pushed back by the federal government to 2025. So, you know, we still have some time to do that, and really--
But it's recognized, right? It's, okay, so when a student gets a driver's license, they can have it, like, put that star on the driver's license to be real ID? So if this law, if this bill becomes law, will that fee be attached to that, or there's no fee?
So I think we're looking at waiving the fees on the IDs themselves. That particular ID, by the way, can be, should be, or can be used if it's real ID. You know, it's a valid real ID credential, may be used for travel, you know, within the states, you know, and so forth. I should just note that if a student or anyone in these groups already have, and I believe Speaker mentioned that, the, you know, a passport or, you know, a driver's license, then there really is no need to get, you know, that, you know, that real ID, just the ID, not the driver's license, the credential. And that's why it goes back to our inability to determine the true fiscal impact because we have no way right now of knowing who has a driver's license, who has a valid passport, you know, and so forth. So I think, but back to your, you know, your inquiry, if someone is going to get a Guam ID, then certainly we are going to encourage getting the real ID credential because, number one, there is no difference in cost. And, you know, except for the real ID, if I'm not mistaken, there's like an additional, there's an additional document that's required, you know, in order to do that, to get that ID.
Okay, so when they're getting a driver's license and they get that star on the driver's, because you don't want two identification, one driver's license, one ID card, right? So you have one. There's no additional cost for that real ID on the driver's license?
No additional cost.
Okay, okay, so that's already taken care of when they pay for their fee for their driver's license?
Correct, but they do need to indicate that on the application.
Absolutely.
That they're applying for a real ID credential.
Of the 23, that's estimated in the fiscal note of lost revenue, about $23,390, just for the two of the three waivers. Where does this money go, the fee?
I'm sorry, that escapes me right now.
If I'm not mistaken, according to the fiscal note, it says that this goes into the Police Service Fund. Is that correct? Does that sound right?
That sounds plausible.
Mr. Menno, are you, okay. Well, here it says that the balance of the fees shall be deposited into the Police Service Fund. So I just wanted to verify if these fees go into the Police Service Fund because if it is, we have to be conscious. I mean, $23,000, I'm sorry, not million, but $23,390 is, you know, it's a payment for something, and that we're gonna have to subsidize it, you know, somehow, or whenever you're taking away from, you know, Paul to pay Peter, you just gotta make sure that they're spending--
I understand, ma'am, and we will verify that.
Okay, I appreciate that.
And give the information back.
If you can, Speaker?
Yeah, it's actually, $10 per applicant is going to the Better Public Service Fund, which is a Department of Revenue and Taxation fund. And the balance, if any, in other words, if the fees are higher, then it's gonna go to the Police Services Fund.
Thank you, Speaker. And then, of course, you guys will verify this for me.
I'm sorry, one-third of the amount goes to Rev and Tax, and the balance goes to Public Services Fund, yeah.
And you will verify. Thank you, Maria.
Yes.
Okay, the other thing is going to DOE, you know, Mr. Swanson. Right now at school, well, I hope if this bill should pass, that you put in a outreach program, you know, to give this information of this new legislation, hopefully that becomes law, to the students. So, you know, posters coming up at the schools and notifying at the high school level that this is an option that they have. Many times, parents are so busy. I mean, even as simple as going to Rev and Tax with them to accompany their child, it becomes difficult sometimes for these parents and kind of hinders the possibility of them getting an ID. But outreach program is very important. So if this goes through, I hope you're prepared for that. But I do have a question. Are there ID, school IDs required at the schools?
Operationally, there's supposed to be, but convincing everyone to use them appropriately is a challenge that never ends.
Well, is there a cost for these students, for school IDs?
No.
Are you sure?
If, no, student body membership is one thing, but the ID card itself--
Well, can you talk directly into the mic? I'm sorry, my hearing today is not--
Okay, the ID card itself can be generated right at the same time as we do school pictures. So it's--
But is there a cost?
Not for the card itself.
Well, what cost is associated?
Because if there's a picture package involved, then there's a fee with that, but the student--
Right, when you pay, yeah, I used to do school pictures for a living. So when you have a picture done, they usually have, but usually the photographers always take a picture of everyone, regardless if they buy a package or not, for the school ID. But I'm hearing that some schools are charging for school IDs. Can you look into that, Dr. Swanson?
Yes, of course.
They're actually charging. Here we are, by law, trying to give them something more substantial of an ID card, and yet the schools are charging our students for ID cards. That's what I'm hearing. So, you know, I'm going straight, you know, to the man in charge and asking that question so that you can let us know, and I hope that's not the case. It's bad enough these students, you know, are being charged for everything they walk on the campus, you know, to breathe even, that they have to get charged for it. I'd hate to see that we're trying to pass legislation to encourage individuals to have identification so that we can recognize them and bring that dignity, but to have to charge them, it's another thing. So I appreciate if you can get that information back to me, okay?
Yes, we will.
And if it is, I hope you stop it, okay?
Yeah, me too.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I don't like surprises.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Sutus Masi, Senator Tadegui. So at this point, I would like to offer the floor for any closing remarks by the speaker.
Thank you for the very good suggestions today, and of course, your willingness, again, to implement this. And, Mr. Swanson, please extend my regards to all of the staff and faculty and the counselors at GDOE and encourage them, and if there's any other way we can help them to implement a program where they remind everybody or something that checks all the students regularly, whether they've got their IDs or not, or a driver-- and as the Director of Department of Revenue and Taxation says, if they have a driver's license, they don't need this ID. If they have a passport, that they don't need this Guam ID. And, but it's for those who might not have either, or those are not possibilities for them at this time, is Dr. Swanson?
Well, we'll do everything we can to support and advertise, engage everybody to be involved.
Sutus Masi. And again, thank you, Director. Really, I very much appreciate your willingness to, and what was really, I'm going to say, in my years of experience as a senator, this is my seventh year, what really surprised me was the immediate recognition that this is an issue that needs to be resolved. So I want to thank you, and you mentioned the governor and then the Lieutenant Governor, thank them as well for discussing this. So I agree, this is a community, this will help our community, and all of us can do our part to assist you in getting this done. So thank you so very much, and thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Sutus Masi, Speaker, and thank you so much, Acting Director Lozama, Mr. Menno, Superintendent Swanson, for your also willingness and to support this important piece of legislation. So if there are no further testimonies, this bill, 244-37, is duly heard. The committee, again, will continue to receive testimony up until April 4th at 4:00 PM. Please address testimony to Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Chairperson of the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics Research and Planning, which can be dropped off at the mailboxes here at the Guam Congress Building or email to office@senatorparas.org. And this concludes the hearing for this bill. Sutus Masi, and have a good day. Thank you. We are going to be in recess until 10:30 to hear the next bill. Sutus Masi. Sidoos Massey. When it's an holiday, the committee is back from recess. We are on our last item on the agenda, which is to hear testimony on Bill 248-37COR sponsored by Senator Sabina Flores Perez. It's an act to amend Section 5214B of Article B, Subarticle B, Article 3, Chapter 5, Title 5 Guam Code annotated relative to sole source procurement of technology, hardware, software, maintenance, support and customization services. So I'd like to provide some opening statements. Bill 248-37 aims to extend the duration of sole source contracts particularly for information technology from the current five-year limit to up to 15 years, or as stated in the bill, five years are the option for two successive renewals of five years each. Procurement for technology goods and services, which have a higher incidence of sole source procurement, are unique in that they typically, they typically offer better pricing for and require a service contract that exceeds the one-year, one-year term currently allowed in law. These procurements usually carry on average a support contract for five years with 10 to 15 years for larger projects. For sole source procurement, this may be especially costly to the people of Guam because of the shorter duration of the contract and increased administrative costs. Optimizing these processes could offer the best value for the people of Guam. By extending the term for sole source contracts, this will help to streamline the solicitation for technology goods and services by eliminating duplication of work and providing the necessary time for future upgrades. As agencies look to upgrading or migrating their technology systems, it is critical that the procurement law supports these efforts in obtaining best value without compromising vital services upon which our community relies, such as dissemination of SNAP benefits, processing Medicaid claims, timely tax refunds and others. I look forward to community input on this matter. Prior to today's public hearing, we did send out invitation letters to Director Byrne of Department of Administration, Acting Chief Procurement Officer Adriana Kidigwa, Chief Technology Officer Frank Luhon of the Office of Technology. A fiscal note waiver was received on February 28th. It states the bill identifies the qualifications for sole source procurement technology, hardware, software, maintenance, support, customization services. As such, the bill is administrative in nature and poses no fiscal impact upon the funds of the government of Guam. Currently, we have no one here today, but we will continue to seek input by key stakeholders, and we will continue to receive written testimony up until April 4th, or we can extend that further. Please address all testimony to Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Chairperson of the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning, which can be dropped off at the mailbox here at the Guam Congress Building or email to The committee will now adjourn. The time is 10:33 a.m. Sidoos Massey. Thank you.